As well as Antonio.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our November conference meeting at this time.
Thrillers Duffy, James, Lazara, Lapour. Here. Deputy Director Bartlet, here. Director Bass.
Here. I will now turn it over to our county administrator.
Thank you, Director. First on my agenda is something very exciting, and we are very honored to have Mr. Joseph Galafaro here with us, who on Monday received a Legion of Honor Medal from the French Republic for his participation in Normandy. The ceremony was held at the French consulate in New York City on Monday. He was accompanied by obviously his family and John Harris, our county veterans officer. So I would ask John to come forward and talk a little bit about the process. And yeah, why don't you sort us over?
Thank you. Back in February was the first time I ever met Joseph Galafaro when he came to my office. And at one point, he had written a letter to the French government trying to get the French Legion of Honor, but it's not an easy process. And he came to the office with his cousin, and we sat down and discussed it. And this is one of the good parts of being a veterans officer, because I see the dark side of the lot, a lot of our injured veterans, a lot of our ill veterans, and dealing with that on a daily basis. When I come across something like this, it brings a smile to my face. And it was absolutely a pleasure working with this man. And after he was in the office, I called the French consulate. I spoke to them over there and was advised that what was needed to apply for this. And we started the process. And back in March 3rd, I believe it was, we actually filed the paperwork to the consulate in New York City, and we had to wait for approval there. Then it was sent to Washington to the embassy. It was approved there, and then it had to go to Paris for final approval. And about a month ago, we got a letter from the French consulate stating that Mr. Galafaro has been awarded as a Chevalier of the Legion of Honor, and we were to report on November 14th. And I have to thank our county administrator, Anthony De Nova, and our sheriff for making the process a little bit easier. I thank you for that. I really do. The family thanks you for that. But what a beautiful start it had. Mr. Galafaro was there with 13 other veterans, all Normandy. And it was amazing to see all these 90-year-olds with like a 20-year-old step after getting this award. They had a champagne reception after it, and they all got to get together and share their stories as peers. And it was just one of these moments where I had to step back and I just watched. And it really was heartwarming to see this. They're all just gabbing about what they did over there and who they served with, and it was just a nice thing. But Joe, I'm truly honored to have worked with you once. To me, you're my hero, and you're here to tell their story, just like other wars, we're here to tell theirs. So I just would like to introduce Mr. Joseph Galafaro, a World War II veteran, Legion of Honor recipient. Joe, would you please stand up? Joe, will you keep him up here?
I have to just thank privilege and honor to present, Joe, with this proclamation on behalf of all the freeholders on this floor. I can't tell you how honored I am to stand next to you, knowing everything that you've done in your life, especially during the war, knowing that I owe my freedom today to you and to the soldiers who fought alongside me through the terrible, terrible war. The Board of Chosen Freeholders would like to present Joseph Galafaro with his proclamation. For add, the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic has a desire to recognize Joseph Galafaro upon his receipt of the Legion of Honor Medal from the French Republic. Joseph Galafaro entered the U.S. Navy on February 18th, 1944, and upon completion of basic training, reported to Boston, Massachusetts, where he was assigned to the USS Tuscaloosa, a CA-37 heavy cruiser, and then assigned to the 2nd Gun Division, Number 3 Dunk Island. On June 3rd, 1944, the USS Tuscaloosa joined Task Force 125, and on June 6th, 1944, at 05:50 hours, the Tuscaloosa opened up with a 8-inch guns with targets being the enemy troops and bunkers on the beaches of Normandy. And while providing supporting fire, the Tuscaloosa was receiving enemy fire from beach positions and operating in heavily mined waters. Joseph Galafaro took part in Operation Overlord, D-Day in Normandy, and Operation Anglo-Dragons in southern France. And in September of 1944, the Tuscaloosa returned to the Philadelphia Navy Shipyard for refitting ammunition and supplies, and then joined the 3rd Fleet in the Pacific in January 1945, and took part in the battles of Iwo Jima and Okinawa. Joseph Galafaro was awarded the Combat Action Ribbon, the Philippine Liberation Ribbon, the American Theater Ribbon, the European African Ribbon, W2 Stars, the Asiatic Pacific Ribbon with 2 Stars, and a World War II Victory Ribbon. Joseph Galafaro received a Legion of Honor Medal from the French Republic for his actions during the Normandy invasion, which was presented at ceremony at the French consulate in New York City on November 14th, 2016. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic that it publicly congratulate Joseph Galafaro upon receiving this most prestigious award, and be it further proclaimed that this board extends its sincere best wishes to him for continued good health and happiness.
All right, guys. One, two, three.
We have yours. Bruce is fired. Oh, yeah. Take a couple. I thought you were gonna do one of those selfies like a selfie stick. I don't have one stick for that one.
He wants what he's got. That's right.
As per gentleman's request. One more, fellas. Ready?
All right. You asked that off.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Hey, Joe, this is a good friend of mine.
Hmm?
Good friend of mine from Wanaquim. Works here at the office.
I did lose.
All right, I'll catch up on it.
Thrillers, next on my agenda is the proclamation recognizing November as Pancreatic Cancer Month. Fifty-three thousand people will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer this year, and over 41,000 will die from pancreatic cancer. It's one of the few cancers over the last 40 years that has not seen survival rate go up. But we are honored to have with us an advocate of pancreatic cancer and also one of the survivors of pancreatic cancer. It is always an honor to welcome to our meeting Mr. Michael Weinstein. Michael, why don't you come forward and talk to us a little bit about how it has gone over the last 12 months since you were last here, and whether or not there have been any improvements in diagnosing and treating this horrible disease?
Well, once again, thank you for having me here. It's always a pleasure to come by and share November with you. I'm very impressed by your board again this year, and raising money with this team. As you heard, the numbers unfortunately continue to rise as to the number of people diagnosed and the number of people who die from this horrible disease. And this year in January, cancer became the third leading cause of cancer death in America, surpassing breast cancer. And it's anticipated to become the second leading cause of cancer death by the year 2020. And only 4% of those diagnosed get to clinical trials, which is a very important phase in going forward in the fight against this disease. Good news is I'm back again individually on Saturday. I will become an 11-year survivor. We have set a goal of doubling the survival by the year 2020. And this goal, good news, is on the way to becoming reality. When we started 2 years ago, the 5-year survival rate was 6%. It's currently at 8%. So we have seen a little rise in that 5-year survival rate. Still the only cancer in single digits, and it's just a horrible diagnosis to get. Through efforts of the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network, we are making this a reality to increase the funding for research, both on the private sector and the federal sector, as well as providing increased in new programs for patients who are diagnosed through our Patient Central, such as knowing your tumor and tumor profiling, and one-on-one discussions with counselors, and as well as complete knowledge of what clinical trials are out there for patients to be involved in. And a new program which is linking currently 12 cancer centers where the clinical trials will be able to extend to more people and set up more directed individualized type of treatments. And that's been a problem with clinical trials, getting the right fit between patient and clinical trial that's available. So that's what's been going on. And once again, I want to publicly thank the Freehold Board for inviting me back and always supporting us so wonderfully and helping us to raise awareness, which is obviously the key to any kind of progress in the fight against this horrible disease.
Thank you. I did tell a mention of the employees raised $1,200 for pancreatic cancer. They got to wear jeans last Friday, and they're always very detrimental causes. They know this one is near and dear to my heart, and many people know my 25, next year, 25 years my father will pass from pancreatic cancer. It was a horrible disease and a horrible thing to watch some people through. It truly is a pleasure to see you again. Congratulations on the 17 years. It's remarkable. There's a very lot more to it. Keep up the good work. I thank you so much for your attendance. Oh, thrillers, I'm sorry, we have our proclamation officially designated the right role business person. Michael, why don't you join thrillers, Lazara?
So this proclamation recognizing November 17th as World Pancreatic Cancer Day is full of information that was astounding to me, and as you listen to what I read, you'll also find it, we really, it's an amazing bit of information that we have here. We just have to hope that the research is going on and continues to go on so that people don't have to go through this type of a disease. Whereas in 2016, an estimated 53,700 people in the United States will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer, one of the deadliest cancers, and 41,780,000 will die from the disease. Whereas pancreatic cancer surpassed breast cancer this year to become the third leading cause of cancer death in the United States, and it is projected to become the second leading by 2020. And whereas pancreatic cancer is the only major cancer with a 5-year relative survival rate in the single digits at just 8%, and whereas what symptoms of pancreatic cancer present themselves is generally in later stages, and 71% of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first year of their diagnosis. And whereas approximately 1,260 deaths will occur in New Jersey in 2016, and whereas pancreatic cancer is the seventh most common cause of cancer-related death in men and women across the world. And whereas there will be an estimated 418,451 new pancreatic cancer cases diagnosed worldwide in 2020. And whereas the good health and well-being of the residents of Passaic County are enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness about pancreatic cancer and research into early detection, causes, and effective treatment. Now therefore, let it be proclaimed by the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic that it hereby designates November 17th, 2016 as World Pancreatic Cancer Day in the County of Passaic.
We had our first event. It was an evening event, and it was such a huge success. I mean, I think partially because it was the first time anything had been done in this area, and people go, oh, it's about time, you know? I mean, we've wanted something for so long.
This is really a grassroots effort. We are run 100% by volunteers. We have a core group of about 20 people who are the reason that this is happening today. We put in countless hours, lots of energy, lots of passion.
I was diagnosed about, almost just over four years ago now. And the first thing I did, of course, is what everybody does is go online and try to figure out what is this thing, you know? And then you immediately get overwhelmed by the negative stuff around it, the survival rates and all of the trouble with it and stuff. And so PanCan helped us when I was sick, myself and my family, and then since then I've worked with the Survivors Network, and it's been a rewarding experience, you know, working with people. The nice thing is that I can give people some hope.
The Pancreatic Cancer Action Network is extremely grateful to all of our volunteers around the country for your dedication, passion, and commitment to this cause. Our organization absolutely would not be where it is today without your support and efforts. The pancreatic cancer scientific community is gaining momentum on this disease, and the visibility that you're helping create around the country is raising the awareness and educating the public about pancreatic cancer. Thank you for everything that you do every day. We are extremely grateful for your support.
Thank you!
Thank you!
Thank you!
Thank you!
Thank you!
Thank you for all that you do! You are awesome!
Thank you!
See that small shape behind your stomach? That's your pancreas.
If you're anything like me, there's a pretty good chance you didn't even know it was there.
But all that changes when something goes wrong.
Think about this: pancreatic cancer is the fourth leading cause of cancer deaths in the United States.
More than 35,000 people will die from it this year.
The 5-year survival rate is only 5%.
Picture that. Walk into a room with 100 people. Five years later, only five are left. That is a statistic you do not want to be a part of.
These are people just like you.
People like my daughter Bridget.
People like our mom.
People like my husband Andy.
People like Concha, my mom.
People like me.
Like me.
Know it, fight it, end it.
Go to pancan.org.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. I'm pretty sure Matt enjoyed it because it did a better job.
Didn't have a jacket.
Everyone, we now review consent, agenda items K1 through K, I'm sorry, K1 is L1 through L74. Hey, Lazara?
Yes, Director, to the Board, we have an amendment to L19, which is dealing with upgrades and repairs for residential meetings and technical maintenance. And we have 78 starters. These are referrals for outside counsel, and I'll just read them all briefly for the record and for your review. L74 is a resolution referring litigation entitled Sandra Bratsky versus Jerry's Carwash Inc., also known as Jerry's Carwash Inc., missing spelling, to the Ball Wonders Law Firm, LLC, to provide outside legal services for Passaic County under the fair and open process. L75 is a resolution referring litigation entitled Louis M. Collazo versus Louis A. Collazo et al. to Wonders McPherson McNeil to provide outside legal services to Passaic County, again, under the fair and open process. L76 is a resolution referring litigation entitled Antonio Caraballo versus Mohamed F. Chaladi et al. to Adams, Gutierrez, and Eladvedor, LLC, to provide outside legal services to Passaic County, again, under the fair and open process. Excuse me. L77 is a resolution referring litigation entitled Victor Gutierrez versus Passaic County Sheriff's Department et al. to Florio Kenny Raval, LLC, to provide outside legal services to defendants, Passaic County Sheriff's Department, and Warden Michael Talrico, again, under the fair and open process. L78 is a resolution referring litigation entitled Victor Gutierrez, same matter, just a different assignment, because there are 3 firms that are gonna be handling this for us. This is going to, this is Gutierrez versus Passaic County Sheriff's Department et al. to Foster and Mazzi LLC, to provide outside legal services to defendant Sheriff's Officer Matthew Vittorio. L79 is a resolution referring litigation entitled Victor Gutierrez versus Passaic County Sheriff's Department et al. to Bouleon Hutton and Dale, LLC, to provide outside legal services to defendant Sheriff's Officer Washington, again, under the fair and open process. And the last one, thankfully, our resolution LP is a resolution referring litigation entitled Victor Gutierrez versus Passaic County Sheriff's Department et al. to Joseph M. Lenzel Esquire to provide outside legal services to defendant Sheriff's Officer Baker, finally under the fair and open process. These were all approved by the committee and given to us last evening.
Thank you. Any other? Any questions? Okay, great. Is there any for executive session?
No, sir.
Awesome. This time, extend motion to adjourn the conference agenda. Move by Freeholder Lazara, second by Freeholder Bartlet. Roll call, please.
Thrillers, Duffy, James, Lazara, Lapour. Deputy Director Bartlet, Director Bass.
Yes. This time, we just move into our regular meeting. Move can you read the open public meeting law?
Ladies and gentlemen, notice requirement of the open public meetings law has been satisfied with respect to this meeting specifying the time, date, location, including the annual notice adopted of reorganization meeting filed with county clerk posting administration building in mail to two new speakers in importance for business of the law.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Thrillers Duffy, James, Lazara, Lapour. Deputy Director Bartlet. Director Bass.
Here. This time, I'm gonna ask everyone to please rise for the invitation and collect the meeting.
Oh God, who provides for thy people by thy power and rules over them in love? Be gracious enough so to bless thy servants, our freeholders in this county of Passaic, that thy people may dwell in peace and safety through our Lord. Amen.
Thrillers Lazara. Flag of our country, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Ask everyone to please remain standing for a moment's silence to remember all the brave Latin women who served our country day in and day out. Thank you. You can sit. This time, extend motion to approve the meeting from October 25th, 2016. Move by Freeholder James. Second by Freeholder Lazara. Roll call, please.
Thrillers James, Lazara, Lapour, Deputy Director Bartlet, Director Bass.
Yes. This time, extend motion to approve the proclamation. Move by Freeholder Lapour, second by Freeholder Bartlet. Roll call, please.
Thrillers James, Lazara, Lapour, Deputy Director Bartlet, Director Bass.
Yes. Are there any freeholders report? We should have a couple. Ladies first. Ladies first.
Well, I just wanted to commend Pam Owen, who is here, the director of the Human Services in Passaic County. She's applied for and receives funding in the amount of $1,486,886 since our last meeting. The funds are going to be used for intensive care management, addiction and mental health services, and municipal alliance programs. You know, the money goes to really good causes, and I just wanted to commend her on following through on those and bringing that money into the county. And here she is.
Did you say you want Pam to come up and explain it?
Sure. So Pam, I just got done saying how wonderful it is and to commend you for bringing in almost $1.5 million into the county in this past month for addiction and mental health services, intensive care management, and municipal alliance programs. We're hoping that you might be able to expand upon that. And just explain a little bit of where this money is going to toward these programs. Do you want to go to Pam? Sure.
Okay, well, it's two grants. The first one, the Discharge Services Grant, that all goes to all of our inpatient, all our detox programs. The primary agency would be Straight and Narrow. And the Municipal Alliance Grant, which is money that's used from seizing all the drug proceeds, that money goes back into the community, and that's all CC municipalities. They run programs for teenagers such as, you've heard of like DARE as a standard program. And the county also matches about $159,000 towards the overall programs.
And you have an additional $35,000 on top of like $1.5 million for intensive care management?
Yes.
And what's that?
Well, those are smaller programs, that's through St. Joseph's, and that's usually outpatient programs for someone actually walking with some assistance. And that's really helpful, particularly since we lost a lot of programs when the Barnhouse went away. Though those, it's not a lot of money, but it goes a long way.
Well, $1.5 million, that's pretty good for in the past month, and I congratulate you and thank you for bringing that money to the county.
Thank you. Thank you, Freeholders.
Was that I said? Great. Pat?
Director, thank you. I just wanted to bring the board up to speed on what's going on up behind the Public Safety Academy, as you recall, we entered into an effort to try to help the city of Patterson with their grant that they received on a new communication system. A little bit of snag, and I want to just acknowledge our OEM Director, Todd Lyons, Director Lyons, who's been tenacious, to say the least, to getting this job done. It was very complicated, there was a lot of moving parts, there was a lot of changing character there that Director Lyons had to deal with, and I'm happy to see that we're getting close to the end.
It's up and running.
It's up and running. There you go. So I just want to acknowledge you, Bob, for the great work that you did up there and the...
A lot of the people involved.
Now, you were in charge when it was difficult, and the residents of the city of Patterson, which by the way, thanks to your recommendation of putting the mobile tower up there, did now incorporate the township of Wayne, which was an unforeseen benefit. So again, I want to acknowledge all the good work that you did.
Thank you. Freeholder James, just want to actually congratulate you, Freeholder Ford, Freeholder Duffy, and Freeholder, as well as your burden guy in your reelection. It's part of victory, and nope, you were everywhere. I was worried about it. It was really a hard rock, but I'm happy to bring you back. You're an important member of this board, and you've been on really long with the other guy.
I'm older than him, so that makes me...
But I congratulate all of you, and I am very happy that you were going to serve for another three years, although the rest of your colleagues have ran. And I want to just mention Hector Laura, a close friend, became a close friend, Steve was an absolutely great Freeholder, and I think he's going to be a great mayor for the city of Passaic, and I think the timing of it is perfect for him, and I can only see more good things happening in the city of Passaic. They're on a roll, they were not well a little bit, I think Hector puts it right back on track. They came to get a more honest, more loving, more caring mayor for that city. So I'm very excited about his future, and we are here, I hope to help in any way we can, and we have to move to say, let's move forward. But I want to congratulate Hector, who's not here, on his appointment as mayor, and I wish him well in his election for mayor next week.
Thank you, Freeholder James.
Really welcome.
I actually am seconding much of what Bruce had to say. First, I want to congratulate you to Pat Terry, to Sheriff Burden, and Surrogate Leo. I have personally, over my four years on this board, had the opportunity to see each of you in service and doing tremendous work that you do, and I'm thrilled, Pat, to have you back and the whole team back for another three years. I'm also, this is my first meeting ever as a Freeholder without a colleague named Hector Laura. Hector and I ran together for the first time, both as a transfer Freeholder in 2012. Built a friendship, and got to know each other rather well. And it's been my privilege to serve with him for four years, to run with him twice. And as Bruce said, you know, the city of Passaic is in good hands, and I'm comforted that he can step up on behalf of the city where he was born and raised and that he loves so much, I know, at a time that's very difficult for the city of Passaic. But it is also very much our loss, mine personally, and all of us as a board, and all of the folks that Hector has worked particularly closely with. His attention was always on those frontline county services that need the most to folks who have the least, our youth services, our senior services, Meals on Wheels, a lot of what we've done and a lot of the important initiatives and expansions in those areas are going to trace back directly to Hector's leadership. And I feel his loss very personally, and I hope that we can all step up and fill the gap and continue the work that you started in this board.
Great, so I'll continue along the same sentiment and wish Mayor Laura Godspeed and best of luck. As we all know, he has a beautiful family, and he comes from a very strong foundation of public service, and he has a much higher calling than just public service. And I know that his faith will guide him as he seeks to really take the city of Passaic to the next level. I couldn't think of a better person to assume that responsibility and assume that role to help transition the city of Passaic moving forward. And as my colleague stated before, it is a huge loss for us here on the board of chosen Freeholders to lose him, but it also gives us an opportunity to welcome someone new on board. As the law states, the Democratic Party will have 35 days from his official resignation, which was November 17th, to appoint someone new. So at our next Freeholder meeting, we will have a new Freeholder join us. No? Oh, the next one, Hector. Okay, great. Well, at our next Freeholder meeting, we'll be able to really send Hector off, send Hector off well. So it'll be Hector Lovefex at our next Freeholder meeting.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. The other thing I wanted to say is, as we saw this past week, we got our first couple of flurries of snow. The season is quickly upon us. As the forecasters have said, this is probably going to be one of the worst winters in terms of snow accumulation that we've seen in quite some time. And I just wanted to let the good people of Passaic County know that we are ready, we are fully prepared, our salt domes are stacked up, our plows are oiled and blades are shining and ready to pick up all of that snow that's going to get dumped on us. So I just wanted to commend Kenneth Simpson, our supervisor of homes, and all of the men and women that work with him, who's going to be out there at the next couple of months pretending to treat us not so nice. But I know that they're going to be there working to ensure that our roads are well taken care of and safe and passage. That being said, I'm going to move on to communications. Extend motion to approve communications. Move by Freeholder Lazara, second by Freeholder Lapore, roll call.
Freeholders James...
Yes.
Lazara...
Yes.
Lapore...
Yes.
Deputy Director Bartlett...
Yes.
Deputy Director Bass...
Yes. Extend motion to open public portion. Move by Freeholder Lapore, second by Freeholder James, roll call.
Freeholders James... Lazara...
Yes.
Lapore...
Yes.
Deputy Director Bartlett...
Yes.
Deputy Director Bass...
Yes. Anyone who wishes to be heard, ask you to please approach the podium. There's a sign sheet, if you don't mind signing in with your name and address for the record. You have three minutes. Anything you say is part of public record.
My name is Robert Isaiah. My name is still Robert Isaiah. I reside right behind this black building at the Y and C in Patterson. I'm not going to miss words, and I'm here to laugh and joke, although I did open with a joke, I'm not here to joke around. I'm not going to miss words, yet I'm here to claim the intellectual property that I, Hector, you Freeholders, were entrusted with. I'm going to say that word again. I'm here to claim the intellectual property that you Freeholders were entrusted with three months ago, which means two months before the election, so you had plenty of time to read it before the election. If you haven't read it yet, you're never going to read it, so don't bother. That's your prerogative, by the way, but it reflects on your character somewhat, not in its entirety, but somewhat. Let me explain why. Not you, you... The fact that Bill Asprey, and I have to say it myself, but the fact that Bill Asprey, a Democratic stalwart, has intimated the Democratic Party has basically grown fat and lazy regarding the needs of his constituents, you see? I think that should be readily apparent, thanks from the fact that we have elected a racist bigot as the president. I don't know why they're doing that. Don't waste this. Didn't you have to move it up here? That's also my trademark, so I can't correct. I did some questioning. I've had this up here before. Should I start again? Should I start again, ladies and gentlemen?
Why don't we have him sit right up here?
Yeah. I'd like to see your eyes and face when I talk to you. What did he call it? Technical difference?
He didn't.
My little tech, okay? Tech, okay?
Just how to tell?
Uh, yes. Okay, let me start, let me begin again, but this time very fast. Like I was saying, I'm here to reclaim the intellectual property that I was given three months ago. Like I said, I'm not here to review the fact that Bill Asprey, a Democratic stalwart, has intimated the Democratic Party has basically grown fat, lazy regarding the needs of constituents, and the fact a racist misogynistic bigot has been elected president is rebooked alone. No, ladies and gentlemen, I am here to request the return of my intellectual property. If you don't have it tonight, that's fine, please have it by the next Freeholder session eight. Also, I must mention two crucial points. Patterson is the largest city in Passaic County, and I pray and hope that Freeholders don't have an attitude that all matters Patterson should be deferred or reburde to the Patterson City Council. Just remember, the issue brought up initially of the white paper was Passaic County base. Also, I know Freeholder Hector Laura has resigned, and everybody said the reason why. His reason for resigning is an excellent one, and I wish him well. Unfortunately, he also has a copy of my intellectual property, so I need to read it to Louis M. Law, Mr. DeNiro, or Mr. Asprey, to find out how do I get my intellectual property back for Mr. Law. And also, I wish him well that the city of Passaic has had enough corruption, and Mr. Laura, I don't believe, is corrupt. On November 8th, however, I have to, I do have to reflect somewhat on the integrity of the Freehold, somewhat, not much. The only reason I'm doing that is because of this statement here. On November 8th, Rosemary Kino is elected to the Clinton Board of Education. Unfortunately, Ms. Kino's behavior figured prominently in the creation of the white paper, so now I must wonder, those that did read the reports, you already know what Laura's name is. So now I got to rhetorically ask, what were you going to do when I came back and asked you for help on that problem, which must originate the one-stop career center not being up to par as far as people's attitudes towards the one-stop career center? I'm going to let you guys dwell on it. I'm basically here to collect the return of my intellectual property, and then I will come back next week, and then I'm going to bring up some scenarios regarding the building at 930 Riverview Drive in total. Because when I went up there to get help from your senior department in regards to help with a housing choice voucher, I was basically churning away, giving a housing list and sent on my merry way. Now, I don't know how much dough y'all spending on that department, but when a senior with a severe disability, suffers seizures, goes up to 930 for help, and somebody hands you a heart list as a senior, and says, you're on my merry way, and you jump in a lot of money in that department, that's not help, that's expediency. I don't know how much time I have left, but I assume I'm bumping up on my three minutes, so let me end it like this. I don't feel very well tonight because I have some physical issues regarding my disability, and I don't want to have any seizures in here because I don't want to freak y'all out. But I'm going to say this: how does somebody in this county get help with getting a unit so they can live in peace and they have a housing choice voucher? And does anyone here, is anyone here part of a committee that can talk to the people at 930 and have them do a better job than just handing me a housing list, guys? All right? In conclusion, I'm going to say this: I think you're all honest and decent, but unfortunately, I think you are heavily influenced by John Kirby, and you've forgotten that you have constituents to worry about, not John Kirby, how he thinks about you. I honestly feel you are more worried about what John Kirby thinks of you than Robert Isaiah, your constituent. And also remember this, I'm going to say it again and reiterate to you, the city of Patterson is the largest city in Passaic County. So when somebody intellectualizes an issue before you, I would hope you attend it seriously, just like you take it seriously when these all agents and other such folks come from upper Passaic County and present their problem, and they're well within their right to do that, and I respect that. But when none of them, however, intellectualized it in a white paper form and asked for your help. Ladies and Freeholders, I thank you very much tonight for your listening, but next time you show up at this session, I need my intellectual property back. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else who feels we need her? Move by Freeholder James... Second by Freeholder Bartlett, roll call please.
Freeholders James...
Yes.
Lazara...
Yes.
Lapore...
Yes.
Deputy Director Bartlett...
Yes.
Deputy Director Bass...
Yes. Mr. Isaiah, if you don't mind hanging out just a little bit, I'll talk to you after the meeting about the housing situation.
Okay. Mr. Bass, no disrespect, I need action. I don't need, I don't need a pep talk.
It was 10 minutes.
Yes, sir. I moved you, I stated. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
We'll move on to the consent agenda. We have an amendment... We'll move on to the consent agenda. We have an amendment for item L19 that noted in the late starter. Oh, okay. I like that. Okay. Time to entertain a motion to approve K1. Move by Freeholder James, second by Freeholder Laporte. Roll call please.
Freeholders James, Lizarra, Laporte, Deputy Director Bartlett, Director Bass.
Yes. Okay. Time to entertain a motion to amend item L19 that noted in the late starter. Move by Freeholder James, second by Freeholder Lizarra. Roll call please.
Freeholders James, Lizarra, Laporte, Deputy Director Bartlett, Director Bass.
Yes.
P74 to.
K10.
L.
Thank you. Thank you. Motion made to add L74 through L80. By Freeholder James, second by Freeholder Bartlett. Roll call please.
Freeholders James, Lizarra, Laporte, Deputy Director Bartlett, Director Bass.
Yes. Time to entertain a motion to approve L1 through L80. Move by Freeholder Bartlett, second by Freeholder James. Roll call.
Freeholders James, Lizarra, Laporte, Deputy Director Bartlett, Director Bass.
Yes. New business? Entertain motion to approve personnel. Move by Freeholder Bartlett, second by Freeholder James. Roll call.
Freeholders James, Lizarra, Laporte, Deputy Director Bartlett, Director Bass.
Yes. Entertain motion to approve business. Move by Freeholder Bartlett, second by Freeholder James. Roll call.
Freeholders James, Lizarra, Laporte, Deputy Director Bartlett, Director Bass.
Yes. Certification of payroll. Move by Freeholder Bartlett, second by Freeholder James. Roll call.
Freeholders James, Lizarra, Laporte, Deputy Director Bartlett, Director Bass.
Yes. Received departmental reports.
Received the file.
Great. I want to wish everybody happy holiday season. God bless. Be healthy and family. Stay safe. Eat a lot of turkey.
I want to take this opportunity to thank all the voters of the state county who came out on election day and returned. Myself, Freeholder Duffy, Sheriff Burden, and Mr. Toledo to office. As I did my very first time, I raised my hand as a Freeholder. I commit to all the residents of the state county to do my absolute best in providing, to be provided, and doing my job as a Freeholder, and never embarrass you. That's my promise. That's my commitment that I will do my best. And thank you. God bless. We share the wonderful experience.
Time to entertain a motion to adjourn. Move by Freeholder Lizarra, second by Freeholder Bartlett. Roll call.
Freeholders James, Lizarra, Laporte, Deputy Director Bartlett, Director Bass.
Yes. Thank you all.
Passaic County is a diverse place with both cities and suburban areas contrasted with the scenic beauty of our very rural areas. In 2010, we attended the Complete Streets Summit. It was an eye opener. What we learned was streets are for everyone. Complete Streets better reflected our values and planning for diversity of place, people, and choice. I guess you could say the summit started us thinking and brought us to the place that we are today. A county with a plan, policy, and an implementation strategy that we can be proud of. A policy by itself isn't enough. We knew we needed to develop a decision-making process that outlined a vision, a policy, and design guidance that all mutually enforced each other. And that's what we did. Our policy was adopted in February of 2014 after three years of deliberate discussion, research, planning, and testing. The development of our transportation element of the master plan was the catalyst in the process. It created a forum for the planning and engineering departments to discuss the benefits of complete streets and how it could be applied to our county. Planning and engineering staff worked together to define a network of facilities in terms of lane use and the context of each roadway that would have an impact on the feasibility, connectivity, and safety. So the Complete Streets Guidelines serve as a pivot between the planning priorities and the engineering details outlined by New Jersey DOT and ASHTO. The policy was the final step in the process. It has the distinction of being an implementation plan and not just a policy. The Complete Streets Guidelines are just that, guidelines on how we implement complete streets. The guidelines aren't handcuffs and don't prescribe how everything should be done. They provide context and a decision-making tool in designing complete streets. It's really simple. Instead of projects standing alone, on their own, they're now implemented within a framework of projects that shows the big picture of how complete streets work. So ultimately, I feel like we put together a very clear policy and planning framework. But success for us is going to be measured by outcomes. And in order to have outcomes, you have to have implementation. Implementation of complete streets happens a few different ways and from a few different programs. We've made incredible progress through our resurfacing program. This is the low-hanging fruit that is inexpensive but very impactful. The way the resurfacing program works, we evaluate the roadway width and then decide under the Complete Streets Guidelines what treatments we can do to each road. Between 2012 and 2015, we've implemented over 100 miles of complete streets treatments, including 33 miles of shared roadways, 15 miles of bicycle lanes, 54 miles of traffic calming, and eight miles of road diet. A road diet reduces the number of lanes dedicated to motor vehicles and provides that with for the exclusive use of pedestrians and bicyclists. Basically, our engineering isn't pro forma book value implementation. Judgment and really thinking about the vision and our transportation system comprehensively is how we approach things. I know that people have concerns about complete streets, such as liability and traffic impacts. However, we were very confident in those two aspects because as long as we follow the accepted engineering standards, liability is not an issue at all. And as long as we do the proper traffic studies to assess the impact on traffic, then that also is not an issue. It's a better way of doing things, and we think it's been great for the county. By authorizing a complete streets policy, we direct our planning and roads departments to incorporate these considerations into everything that they do, from major capital plans to annual restriping and resurfacing projects. The Freeholders authorization also lets our municipalities know that we'll support and work with them to make complete streets a reality in every city and town. I'm proud that Passaic County has the most comprehensive complete streets policy in the state of New Jersey. It's something we've determined supports our communities and is something that we're going to support today and going forward.
See that small shape behind your stomach? That's your pancreas.
If you're anything like me, there's a pretty good chance you didn't even know it was there.
Pancreatic cancer is the foremost leading cause of cancer deaths in the United States.
More than 35,000 people will die from it this year.
These are people just like you.
People like my daughter Bridget.
People like me.
Know it, fight it, end it.
Go to pancan.org.